Let's get started and ask you to stand for the budget lead. Paul, please.
Mayor Mallor.
Present.
I'm trigger.
Here.
Present. Here.
Let the record show, we have six present with one absent. Counselor Richards had surgery recently and is not feeling good this evening. Asked to be excused. Time, I'd like to have a motion to approve if it's... Don't move. Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show, six ayes, no nays, and one absent of approval of Counselor Richards' absence.
Mr. Mayor, if I could interrupt real quick, I just need to remind all the council that if you don't have the green ring, then the people can't hear you.
Thank you for the reminder.
Yeah.
I want to thank you for everyone who is joining us this evening. For members of the public who would like to take part in tonight's meeting, we have some instructions to help in case you are new to using the Microsoft Teams. Notice the icon in the upper right-hand corner of your screen. The second one from the left is a chat bubble icon, indicated that with a yellow arrow. If you wish to be recognized by the mayor to speak, please choose the bubble icon to enter the meeting chat. It will appear on the right-hand side of your screen. In the chat, enter your name, address, and phone number, followed by the topic you wish to discuss. If you wish to speak at any point during the meeting, you can choose the hand icon, also located in the upright-hand corner. It is equivalent to raising your hand. The mayor, acting chairperson, or moderator will ask you to speak at the appropriate time. We'll give everyone a few minutes now to enter their name, address, phone number, and the topic they'd like to address with the council in the meeting chat. We will ask, in the interest of time, that people not repeat the previous speaker. Instead, state you agree with their point or disagree with their point. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes, and an extension of that time is the sole discretion of the mayor or meeting chairperson per council rules. Those joining by phone will be noted by the moderator for the mayor or chairperson. The fact that the meeting is online does not excuse poor behavior, and the mayor does retain the right to have people removed from the meeting as stated in council rules. Also, before we get started, cell phones should not be used in the council chambers by city staff or council during this meeting for any reason, including text messages, emails, or phone calls. If a member of the public needs to utilize their cellphone for a call, please exit the council chambers. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a point of order, please.
Go ahead.
I was very pleased that you sent that notice out to us about the texting during a council meeting. I do have some questions for Robert. Robert, if I, if one of the staff is giving a presentation, and during that presentation, I have questions I'd like to ask, and I write them down on a piece of paper, and I announce those in the recording, do I need to turn in that piece of paper with those notes on it?
If it pertains to the business of the council at the time that they are doing it, you turn in your note.
Okay. So, so, Robert, I'm not done yet. So, all the communications that are done in this council chamber, especially with the council, is subject to public records?
No.
So, if somebody's texting in this meeting today, that cannot be requested for public...
I didn't say that.
Okay.
You said everything, and I said no.
Okay. So, my question then is, if...
I'll cut it short.
Okay.
A public record is any writing that contains information relating to the conduct of the public's business. That's the definition of a public record.
Okay.
If it doesn't pertain to the public business, then it's not a public record.
Okay. So... I'm really, I'm really can... So, if I see someone texting in a council meeting, is that subject to public records?
You notify your chairman of the committee, and you take it through that process.
Okay, okay. And so...
So, you don't have six people doing six different things, you take it through the person who has control of the meeting at the time.
Okay, thank you. I'm done.
You betcha. Okay.
Ashen, you brought up something I thought was interesting, that how do we know if the correspondence or the notes pertain to what's going on in the meeting or not unless they're able to be requested?
You don't.
Okay.
But I think clarification, Robert, is the, our media, if they see this, they have the right to request those records if they feel it's part of the... They make a public records request? Yeah.
Well, I have one more question then. Can a counselor request that?
I don't think it's any different. I don't think a counselor is, is not able to do what a citizen's able to do.
Okay.
Request a public record.
Thank you, Robert.
And, um, I forgot what else.
Okay.
Right, Dave, because we're here because we are citizens, and so we didn't give that away when it came in the door.
Moving on. I was saddened today to hear the passing of a county commissioner, John Lindsay. He was midway through his sixth four-year term in office. Fifty-four years of age, I mean, and that's young. I'm sorry to hear that. He was the longest-tenured member of the Lynn County Board of Commissioners. I'll do a brief, quick on him. He was a Lebanon high school graduate, lived in South Lebanon, served in the U.S. Navy, and worked with the refrigeration industry before being elected to represent position one on the Board of Commissioners in 1998. You can't replace the contributions that a county commissioner does. At this time, I'd like to have a moment of silence. Thank you. At this time, we consent agenda?
If you approve.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show, we have six ayes with no nays with one absent approval of consent agenda. Recognition of visitors and hearing of petitions. Anybody who'd like to come forth before council to be heard, please come forth, name and address for the record.
Josh, make sure you turn on the speaker. That's okay. I forget it all the time, too.
Josh Victor, 44004 Wiley Creek, Sweet Home Morgan, 97386. I was just here because, sorry, I missed the last meeting about the improvement district. I'm kind of sorry. I'm kind of glad I wasn't here, honestly, but I'm kind of the one that initiated most of that. So, I did go around, talked to everybody, got signatures from everybody. Obviously, everybody wanted it, just nobody really wants to pay for it. So, I do own thirty, I think with the last property splits and the last couple properties I just bought, thirty-two of the fifty-eight properties that are down there. So, yeah, I've been pushing for it a lot. So, when everyone says nobody wants it, it's not, nobody wants it.
I just wanted to let everybody know that. If there is, like, I heard everybody in the different ideas, I heard the, I think it was Tom, talk about maybe only doing the part of the project and just doing the water and just a street overlay. And I was going to suggest, like, if that was the case, then what if the city were to say, like, okay, we're going to save that money from the overlay, and I would forfeit all of the portion that would benefit all of my properties if it could be, you know, proportionately with the other properties there, or if there was a grant, I'd forfeit whatever from all my properties that would benefit from it, and that should substantially help benefit everybody else that, you know, is in a higher bracket or whatever. So, like I said, I think it's very important down there. I go down there a lot. I have a lot of houses down there. It's horrible, and I think everybody knows it is. Just like I said, nobody really wants to pay for it. And I don't blame them. I mean, I when we first put this together, we didn't know what kind of cost it's going to be to anyone. And frankly, it was a lot higher than what I thought for all mine, too. But, like I said, I do think that even, as far as I understand, you have to have some sort of approval or something before you can even get a grant or anything. You have to have some sort of form of an LID or, you know, approval before you can even get a grant. And like I said, if a grant's achieved, then if it would help benefit those people, I'd forfeit all of mine or whatever to help put it towards theirs. So, that way, like, that's, you know, thirty-eight properties less, or thirty-two properties less out of the fifty-eight. So, that should benefit those ones in proportion to the amount that they had to pay. Like, whatever. But I really think it needs to be done. I don't mean, I wouldn't say to anyone, like, hey, we're going to put a hundred thousand dollar lien on your property, but maybe figure out some other solutions. Like I said, instead of spending the hundred and fifty or two thousand hundred dollars it would take to do overlays, I'd forfeit mine, apply that to theirs, boom, that knocks theirs down, or something along those lines, like. But, like I said, I think where there's a will, there's a way. And like, I talked to the city, and they've already been able to crunch some numbers and start getting some other stuff down, too. And like, just so you guys know, it's not like just nobody wants to do it. So, I just thought I watched it on TV, and like I said, frankly, I'm kind of glad I wasn't here. But, yeah, I just wanted, like I said, I didn't want it to go unnoted, but, yeah, I want it done, and I do own, like, over fifty percent of those properties. So, and I do have wells that run dry, and I have neighbors' houses that I run water to their wells because they run dry, you know? And really, when you're just paying for that water to come in, and it's like, it's, doesn't make sense. So...
Well, thanks for bringing to us. It is duly noted. We are revisiting this, so we didn't...
Yeah, and I will be here at the next meeting. Somehow I missed my calendar, but I'll be here for the next one, for sure.
Yeah, it has come back, the city, and they're crunching numbers, and we're looking at options.
Yeah, like I said, if there's whatever I can do to whatever, then like I said, I'll be willing to do whatever to try to benefit the other landowners around the area to make a more of a consent or whatever. So...
Mr. Mayor, Josh, we're not against this.
Yeah.
And, but we got a little bit of a mixed message.
Oh, absolutely.
And so, it was a little difficult first, but anyway, we're, first time, I'm good about it.
Yeah.
And we understand it was sticker shock, and we're working through staff shock.
Yeah, for sure. So, like I said, I just wanted to make, like I said, I'm sorry I wasn't here, but after watching the video, like, you know, I'm glad I was there.
No, I think everybody agrees. It needs to be done, but how we get there is going to be the challenge.
Well, thank you, guys. I very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to come forth before council to be heard? My screen's going on, so it'll be online. Okay. Want to, old business, new business, status update of city engineer projects?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to go ahead and kick it over to Greg, but as council is aware, we've got a lot of different projects in the pipe right now and coming down the pipeline, pun intended. So, we thought it'd be good to have our engineer of record come and kind of update you on everything that we're working on. There's a lot, and I think we've covered, we covered that in pretty, some detail during the council training, but Director Springman thought it'd be good to have Preston come and visit with us again and recap some of the things we're working on. So, I'll turn it over to Greg and Preston.
Yeah, most of you guys know Preston Van Meter. He is our engineer of record, works for West Yoast. He's been around in different facets and helped us on a lot of different projects. We've been working now with West Yoast, I think, under his contract for about eight, nine months, and we're just now starting to get up to speed with the RFP that when we put out, and the team that we assembled for streets, water, looking at automation and other things. So, with that, I want to turn it over to Preston Van Meter, and we'll give you an update of all the current things that we're working on right now. So, Preston.
Thanks, Greg. Good evening, all. It's good to be here. Next slide, do I have, do I have to say next slide, Brandon?
I mean, I don't mind seeing.
We can't afford batteries for it, so...
Thank you, sir. Which way do I have to? There we go. All right. So, I'll talk about the, we have six task orders, we call them. Every contract that we have is a project. Those are task orders under our agreement. So, there's several working on right now. There's some that we're scoping, that we're in the process of kind of sorting out the details and figuring out what needs to be done and how much it's going to cost, things like that. We'll talk about those that are things that you might see in the next few council meetings, and then obviously answer any questions you'll have. So, the six task orders that we currently have open, there's a, and I'll go through all six of these in detail, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about them here, but the six are, we have a general contract for things like coming tonight, so that we don't have to do a separate task order for individual couple hours here or there. The first project that we're nearly complete on is, there was a failing onsite disinfection system at the water treatment plant that's been replaced with a bulk sodium hypochlorite, which is bleach system that provides the disinfection for the clear well. That is the final step in the water treatment process before it goes out into the system. We're working on and just about finished with our final design on a project to make some modifications to the finished water pumps, which are the pumps that push water from the water treatment plant out into the distribution system. And then also to make some updates on the backwash, which is a process by which we flush out all the stuff we don't want to flush it out and send it off into a different place in the treatment process. An important one right now is the American, America's Water Infrastructure Act, RRA and ERP. Those have tight deadlines, so we'll talk a little bit about that. For Civil West on this summer's overlay projects, which are nearing line completion, and we just signed the contract for, I think Greg has usually called it the two main replacement program. There might be some other smaller diameter water mains. So, it was easier to put small, so I went with small. Title of that task order. So, that one just got finished, and we're just starting it up with some of the system modeling. I'll talk a little bit about that. Brandon, I'm up top somewhere. So, some others that we're working on, trying to right-size our costs, or estimated costs to look at what it would take to remodel, rehabilitate the bandstand at Sankey Park. It definitely needs some help, and trying to find a way to do that within your guys' budget. So, that's something Greg and Blair and I'll be talking about tomorrow. There is an evaluation, kind of the next step of the water plant. There's an evaluation of the fluoride system. That system, like many of the systems at the water plant, is oversized. It's inefficient. Trying to right-size that and then add some additional automation, so it's easier for the plant staff to operate. Greg is working with Pacific Power on a potential new standby generator for the water plant that would be paid for in a partnership with Pacific Power, and he may have updated you on that. And then a couple others that we have in progress, we have talked about this for a while, but looking at a regional biosolids composting. So, that's the solids that come off the wastewater plant, potentially partnering with Lebanon and Albany, who are both considering installing similar systems in a way that you could regionalize that biosolids process, and hopefully gain some economies for everyone that way. So, hope to start that as soon as I get some of these moving a little bit faster, then we'll drop into that, and I think all three cities are excited to get that going. And then, once we get through the planning step on the small diameter water main replacement program, we'll jump right into hopefully designing the first phase of replacements that we, Greg is really hoping to get done this summer. So, those are the things that we have in progress. That's eleven total task orders or contracts or projects. So, I'll go through the ones we're working on right now. As I said, on the general engineering services, it's the first task order we did. It's just a, basically a relatively small bucket that's just used for things like, there was an issue with flooding down on between Ninth and Thirteenth a few months ago, so we had a site visit out to look at that. And also, at the same day, went up to the water plant and met Stephen out there to look at some of the automation upgrades that he wants to do with our vendor, who is called the Automation Group, and then attending city council meetings, things like that. So, that's the first task order. There's not been a lot of money spent on that task order. So, the water treatment plant, the second one, that's really close to being completed. It was mostly a SCADA upgrade. The Automation Group did a lot of the work. But there was, this is a picture of, it's an onsite sodium hyposystem, so you use salt to create the bleach that you end up feeding into the process to do disinfection. That had failed, and they do about ten years as the reactor life for those systems. So, the goal, that Stephen wanted to switch over to a bulk hypochlorite system, so just getting something delivered in, rather than having to rely on having brine deliveries, salt delivered into the site, you just get the bleach, and it's, tends to be a little bit more cost-effective over time when you look at the system replacement. Salt's pretty corrosive, so those reactors tend to go a little more regularly than some of the other equipment that we like to put into water treatment plants. So, that project's really close to being done. A little bit more programming work, I think, is all that's really needed, and TAGS got that on their list of things to do. Task Order Three, this one is really close. Hope to finish our, what we call ninety percent design, which is really, the design's done. It just needs one final review step by the city and by Oregon Health Authority. Hope to get that done next week. Hopefully, go out to bid here in the next month or so and finish the summer. The one thing about that project is to install a backwash pump. So, I know you all are familiar with the pressure issues and the things that you have on the distribution side. Some of that is caused... Did I do that? Or, okay. Some of that is caused by the way the system back, so what happens is when we backwash, we're pushing water in reverse through the process, right? We're running the filters upside down. To do that, we have to pull water from somewhere. So, a lot of times, there's a separate storage space, clear wall, or other things that we'll pull it from. In the case of your, the city's water treatment plant, it actually pulls the water directly out of the distribution system. So, the water that we're pushing up into the reservoirs to drop down into the distribution system, we're actually pulling that water back in. That's when you see some of those really low pressures. And based on some of the initial modeling, those pressures are below twenty PSI, which is the bare minimum for fire flows, for fire flow pressures in Oregon, and we really like to see a minimum of forty. So, that's like really, really bare bones minimum. So, hopefully, the goal is that that new backwash pump that we're going to install will alleviate some of those really low system pressures that you see. I don't think it'll alleviate them all, because you do have some demand and pipe sizing issues and other things that still have to be addressed, but the hope is that that'll, that'll make some improvements, and then we can kind of see how it does, and then, you know, adjust from there in terms of what comes next. So, that's, that's that project, and hopefully get that out to construction here in the next couple of months. Okay, the AUA, the America's Water Infrastructure Act, it's really a cybersecurity act, was passed in October 2018. It requires, it's two steps. So, there's a risk and resilience assessment. So, it's your system, and it's not all cybersecurity, it's just a big cybersecurity focus. It's kind of assessing the threats to your water system. I don't know if you've seen the news lately, the water system that was hijacked down in Florida, and they were actually, I believe it was caustic that they were overloading into their, into their finished water. So, that suddenly made this act front and center, especially in our world. It's all anyone's really talking about right now, is this, how do we stop these cyber attacks and threats that we're seeing? It would be really easy, following the same pathway, for someone to break into most SCADA systems. You know, you just need to know where that tunnel is, and the way that we do automation and plants, it's fairly easy to have outside control. So, definitely something to be mindful of and part, a big part of the process in terms of our evaluations. So, there were three waves of the AUA process. We call them waves. So, the bigger cities went first, and they, those plans are already done, the both steps. The second wave is just finishing up, just finished up in December, and I think the third wave, I thought I had the table in here. So, the third wave is really, or, excuse me, the first half of the second wave finished at the end of the year, and we're cranking through a bunch of the last step on the ERPs for cities like Beaverton and some of the mid-sized cities in Oregon right now. The smaller cities then are just kicking in right now. That first risk and resilience assessment is due at the end of June. It takes about three or four months to get through the process, so we're going to be pulling her in right on time. We will get it done, but we're still getting calls from people trying to figure out what AUA stands for. So, there's going to be a lot of cities in Oregon that are, those last couple months are going to be, there's going to be a big scramble. There's not too many firms like us that are, that are actually just cranking these things out really fast, but we'll be able to get yours done, no problem. We got it into the queue, and we got it started, and we've had it kicked off now. So, in fact, was just emailing with the team today, and we've got a couple workshops that we need to get scheduled, Greg, with you guys for the next couple of weeks. And then, the emergency response plan is an easier, it's a little bit easier. Once you know the threats, it's the threat assessment that's the big part of it, and then it's easier to develop the emergency response plan once you know what the threats are. So, that one's a little bit easier, not as, maybe not as fast-paced to get to the December end-of-year step, to finish up the AUA compliance. I think there's one more slide here. We did have the kickoff meeting. There is an electronic process to certify, which we would recommend, and then there's just the various elements of the project as we will go through. It's very structured. We have just, we have this team, and that's all they do. So, they just drop this task into these dates, and then we just get that calendar, and we just kind of work right down the process. The forms are all fairly straightforward and consistent, so all the plans are really similar. Out, in terms of the forms, the information that comes out of them obviously is very individual to specific systems. So, that is rolling, and we will meet those deadlines. One thing to note, so we've only contracted for the first step, the RRA. So, there'll be another task order for the ERP. That'll be less expensive than the contract we have right now, but that we'll put together as soon as we get through the first phase. And the reason I did that is because what I'm seeing is we're becoming more efficient at those plans, and so rather than contract that now, I think the number, the cost for that for you guys might go down if we just wait and kind of let all these other people go before you. So, it was my way of trying to save you a little bit of money for that second step when the time comes. So, Task Order Five, the street overlays, so this is a Civil West out of Albany is one of our partners on our, on our team. They're leading this project to develop this summer's overlay program. I think it's a quarter mile of streets being overlaid. Right now, the plans are really close. They're just going through final review. Definitely will get that out to bid. It is being split into two phases, because there's some funding from the surface transportation block development or block grant program that's being split with city funds. So, there'll probably be two packages or two phases, and we'll get an initial phase out. The goal is to have it out in May, so here in six weeks or so, once we get through all the kind of final approvals and other things. So, we're going to be doing some overlays this year, which is kind of cool. I know that's something Greg's been talking about. So, start to fix up some of those streets that I know are, have been problematic. And there's the list of streets or the top, it's maybe hard to read, but those are the streets that are targeted. It's maybe hard to read, but those are the streets that are targeted and they're kind of all over town. So everybody's, hopefully all areas of town are getting, I didn't do it, I promise. So that one's close to getting into construction. And excited to get that going. I know Greg is and and the public works folks as well. We did target these overlays for places where we don't think we're going to be replacing a lot of the smaller diameter water mains. So where there's not a lot of utility impacts and other things. So we're not overlaying streets. And then we, you know, it's the civil engineer's worst nightmare to overlay a street and then go back and cut it up and put a pipe in the ground. So we we tried to find places where we didn't think there was gonna be, you know, follow on utility work in the next few years. And last, you got it, Brandon? And then the so the small diameter water main replacement program, this it's unfortunate, you can't really see it.
It's interesting. So we have the hydraulic model that was prepared by a different firm. A lot of the two inch water mains are clustered down in the older part of town, kind of this end of the city. And what this model shows is dangerously low pressure. So all these red dots you see around here, those are areas where we have pressures that are in that less than 20 range, which is not real. So there's a little bit of work that we want to do to to check the model setup and make sure all of the lines connect, like the water mains go, there's a cross and not two water lines crossing over each other as far as the model sees. Those connectivity issues can cause some of those pressure fluctuations that we see. Once we do that, we'll make an assessment of the the minimum pipe size we would like to see in those areas where we have those small diameter water mains. And a lot of times, if it's a two inch water main and it's old, it might actually have an effective diameter of three quarters of an inch with all the corrosion and everything that's built up in there. So we'll, you know, the goal would be to get those smaller diameter water mains up to a minimum size. Six inch would be the bare minimum if it's if it's looped for fire flows and eight inch for a dead end line would be our recommendation. So we'll make some initial modeling work to make those assessments as soon as we do kind of figure out, okay, this is, these are the places where we're going to replace these water mains all over town. Then we'll start to develop a plan around, okay, let's do this area in phase one and this area in phase two. And it'll be with this, I don't know if it'll be three years or five years. It'll be some period of years as we go through the process, taking the worst of the pressure areas where we have really the low pressures and trying to identify those and make sure you don't have some of those concerns about the really low pressures in in certain areas of town. Put those in that first phase and then kind of stage it out from there. At the same time, we'll look at things like sewer lines and and laterals and other things that may need to be replaced. If you're gonna dig up the street, the thought is you'll eventually go in and overlay it. You know, replace sidewalks, repair sidewalks, whatever else needs to be done. Get the utilities done first and then maybe come back the next year and overlay if, you know, we can stage the program. So that would drop into that overlay program that Greg has developed, where we do the utilities first, then we come back in and we kind of just stage that. So hopefully in a period of, you know, a few years, you start to see some real improvements in terms of both the utilities and the streets throughout town. I don't know. And Greg, I know this is a big deal to you. I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add.
We've been talking about this for a couple of months now through our training.
Well, guys, we've been talking about this for a couple of months through council training and other discussions on rates. So it's kind of good that you come in and dive down into weeds and and they get to see an idea of things that we're doing, we've been doing on a weekly basis for a while. And I and I'm happy that you hit on the point that we're just not throwing pipe in the ground, right? We're we're finishing our model. We're we're letting the data tell us where to go, where we have issues, where things need to be replaced. We're not just saying let's just fix everything. And so we're gonna get good information and we're gonna know where to go first and how to do it and to the best of our ability. And so I'm appreciative you kind of mentioned that, so.
Yeah, clearly. So the last thing I'll note is I would consider this, there's obviously issues that need to be addressed that are gonna be easy to spot. There's other things that are gonna be that Greg has talked about that'll be a little bit more difficult to identify. What's the best place to do that? So one would be a new drinking storage reservoir. Where does that go? Where's the best place in town? If we can address some of the low pressure issues with the pipeline upgrades, maybe there's a better location than the water plant for this new reservoir. Maybe it's down at, you know, the other end of town where there's not a lot of storage. So that next step would really be what what we recommend is to update your water master plan to where you could make some of those, you know, 20 year thoughtful decisions, plan for projects and and have them come online at the time when they're needed. So that would be the next step. The model is the kind of the foundation of that of that project. And so you'll be well ahead of the game when you get to the point where Greg's decided he wants to try to pull that into his budget. And and at the same time, we'll keep going on everything else we can do, making sure that we're doing our best to not have any sunk investments. So, you know, same conversations we had at the wastewater plant when we were doing the initial planning. Let's make sure that you're not spending your rate payers monies on money or funds on things that you're not gonna need down the road, that everything's, you know, thoughtful in terms of the long term. And so that's the the way that we'll approach things in terms of our recommendations for both this plan and anything comes out.
Yeah, and to add on them, the master plan is a document that Blair's gonna be able to use as we get developers come in and we talk about SDCs and and as they want to develop and the things that are gonna be needed for those specific areas. And so that document becomes kind of our bible as we move forward.
And that's it. I'll happy to answer questions.
Counselors have any questions?
It was that boring.
It was that informative.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, real quick. I just need to reiterate to the counselors that these are directional microphones and to staff. And you've really kind of got to be right in front of them for them to be effective. So we're not, we're getting better, but we're still a work in progress. So I just want to remind you one more time. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, request for council action, resolution number seven for 2021, system development charge methodology.
Yeah, SDCs seem to be dominating a lot of our time lately. I'm gonna go ahead and turn this over to Blair and and I think we're in the home stretch.
Yeah, we are. There's a light at the end of the tunnel. This is the first of three resolutions on the agenda tonight that all deal with SDCs. We have already had a the public hearing regarding the methodology to hear input from the public. That's what was required by law. In order, we also tonight will have the third reading of the amended ordinance for SDCs. And so these resolutions kind of put everything else into effect. The first one, this this resolution number seven is to adopt the methodology, which you've heard presentations from our consultants on, and we talked about the the February 9th meeting. The methodology is basically your formula of of how we how you calculate these things. And so you've seen it al- already. I'm not sure that I need to, if you would like me to go over more about how the method methodology works, of course, I'm happy to do that, but really probably best to get to your questions if you have questions about how it works. The other two portions that we'll look at tonight are the the capital projects list and then the actual fee resolution. So methodology by itself doesn't actually change the rates. It just gives you the formula that and and all the justification for setting those rates. And the reason these things are all separate is that way you can amend each one of them individually and you don't have to do the whole process over again. So if you have any questions about the methodology, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions from the counselors?
I just have one, at least. If you're going to do the resolutions tonight, which is what's up there, would you do them after you adopt the ordinance?
Yeah, I can reverse the role. I can.
In the whereas is in the first one, when the whereas in number seven, it says council adopted it. So I just.
You want me to do it after the ordinance bills is what you're saying?
Right, you can discuss them now and do whatever, but just we just we just adopt our resolutions after we adopt our ordinance.
I can do that. So any question, any questions or counselors?
I do have a question regarding table four, seven on page 39. I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly the methodology here. Gross SF per TG SF. The SDC per unit there, let's just look at the library, 29,815. Can you help me understand that one a little bit better, please?
So first of all, there's actually the where it says 1,000 gross SF per TG SF, that's actually a typo that we I discovered. It should just say per 1,000 gross SF, which per 1,000 gross square feet of the of the development, similar to the other to the other uses that you see there. So the this particular table is the transportation SDC. And so it's based on what kind of trip generation that kind of use has. And so what they're saying here is according to all the data, the engineers are saying a library would have 72.05 average daily trips, which is why it has a much higher SDC per unit. One thing that is important to recognize is that if that library is built by the city of Sweet Home, then under our ordinance, it is exempt from SDCs because it is, it would be built with city funds and it would be a city project to build that that facility. And so it's kind of, the reason it's in this list is because they're providing all the the general categories that you have. It's all part of putting putting the methodology together, but a city library is not going to to have to pay those SDCs.
Just one follow up question, just so we understand what we're voting on. There's also like a clinic, line 630, at 15,791. Now, when an individual comes in to build a clinic, does that mean they're paying 15,791 per square unit, square foot?
If if their if their building is exactly a 1,000 gross square feet, then that's the SDC that they would pay for the transportation.
Okay. And if it was 10,000 square feet, they.
Then it would be that equivalent, it would be 10 times that amount, yes.
Thank you.
Now that, keep in mind, this methodology, that's the, that is the full system development charge based on the the capital projects list that they have that they have in the methodology. What we talked about at previous meetings was that, and and that full SDC is is fully justified according to the data. That doesn't mean you have to charge that SDC. That just means that's the most you can charge with the data that we've put into this methodology. And so what we talked about in previous meetings was that in October, when you met, you gave the the guidance that we wanted to have a target for a single family home of 15,000 that we would reach over a five year period. And so in the rate resolution that you will see, it uses that that target to prorate all of these to be the right percentage over that time. And so in the fee resolution exhibit for for what the fees would be, it's actually a lower amount than what you're seeing in the methodology here by that by that proportion.
Thank you.
So Blair, if I understand you, what you're saying is that this would be the maximum in five years or whatever, when we reach the maximum that we've talked about. Thank you.
Right, the only way you can exceed this is one with inflation, because there is an inflation component that the ordinance has and that the methodology has. The other way you could exceed this is if you chose to add more data that would change the the calculation. So for instance, if you load more capital projects in the capital projects list and you want those projects to be reflected in the SDCs, then you could do your 30 day notice and have another public hearing and and amend it. And that would get you a higher SDC. But as it as things stand, this is the maximum and the only way it's changing is with inflation.
Just a quick question, just on page 39, it it jumps around quite a bit there. If you have, and I'll pick on a retail store, but retail store has all those categories in one, how do you?
So so you're you're saying if you have a retail store, but it has has qualities of the other uses?
Yeah.
Which one do you do? It's mainly a matter of staff interpretation, basically. And so if I if if we had a retail store and they didn't fall under the other categories, but they were still a retail establishment, we would just use the general retail store number. But if it was one that was definitely a hardware store or hardware slash paint store, then we would go to that category or a nursery garden center, we'd go to that category. But.
Store that has every one of those categories.
That's a good question. I'm not sure how exactly we would.
That's the only thing I've seen on this would be a question mark is I see several examples in here where you have a specific category, but you'd have several that meets that falls under.
I suppose one one thing you could do is each of those stores are gonna have different designated areas for those uses. You know, for example, you have, you know, in your Walmarts, you have your general merchandise, you have your garden center, you have your grocery component. And those hell have very clearly defined areas of 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 gross square footage that are devoted to those particular parts. And so you could take that gross square footage for the entire project and then have each of those sections have a a second separate component of the SDC and then charge it based on, have each one of those charged on this on based on their own rate.
Yeah, I see questions like in the supermarket, that one's kind of a you're specific going from discount supermarket to convenience markup. But I've seen stores that are discount convenience markets.
Right, and and yeah, and and this is just the transportation SDC too. So it's gonna have vastly different charges because of the different amount of trips that you have associated with it. You, you know, your convenience, your mini marts are gonna have many more visitors over the course of the day, even though they have a smaller parking lot than your supermarket is going to. And so that's why that that's reflected in the SDC.
Just food for thought. Any other questions, counselors? Okay, we'll move on to resolution number eight for 2021, system development charge capital projects list, page 60.
So again, this is the, all of the numbers that are in the methodology and also in the fee schedule are, it's based on not only the projects that we have done, like the the debt that we carry for the water treatment plant or and so forth, but it's also based on the projects that we need to do. And so that was ba- that was calculated with a capital improvements project list that we supplied to our consultants. This particular list is the same one that was used for the methodology. And so this is the list that we're proposing be approved. This, keep in mind that these total project costs are all estimates and so they can change. The important thing when it comes to this list is that the only projects that you can spend SDC funds on are projects that are on this list. And so if there's another project that comes to mind or that becomes a priority to the council, you would need, if you wanted to be able to fund it with SDC funds, you would have to amend the capital projects list to include that project. Now, that doesn't necessarily change the SDCs that any development pays. The only way, you know, if you if you swap projects in and out, you are completely at liberty to do so by resolution. You can change this list. If you put a whole bunch of projects in there, of course, that's gonna dilute your your funds. You know, you're you're not gonna have the funding to. your your funds. You know, you're you're not going to have the funding to pay for all of them. Now, if that's if that's okay with you, that's fine. I mean, that just means that you either have to find other funding or you prioritize things and you take longer to get those get those taken care of. But if you want to use this list to justify a higher SDC, well, then you have to go through the process of of giving your public notice, your thirty day notice and holding that public hearing. I'm not saying that you should do that, and I'm not saying I even think that you're going to do that. But I just want to be clear about the process of what what this list actually means. It's the list of projects that you can spend this money on, and it's also the list that your justification is based on.
So, Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
So are we I think the word is what I want duty bound to complete these projects?
I mean, kind of. Yeah, I mean, it's not it. If you get audited, I suppose they're gonna they're gonna look and see at the at the money, the SDC funds that you're spending, and they're gonna want to make sure that those funds match up with these projects. Now, if if a project just keeps on getting put down to the bottom of the pile, but you keep on spending SDC funds on eligible projects, I don't know that any organization is going to come after you for that one project constantly getting put down to the bottom of the pile. It's just what the what the state and the law mainly cares about is whether you're spending SDC funds on SDC eligible projects.
Well, I understand that, but but the pedestrian bridge has been a point of contention with this council, and it's on the project list. Yeah, I just wanted to know if we needed to recognize that that's one of those things we have to do.
Now, i- if it's on this list, again, it doesn't mean it's it doesn't mean it has to be done first. It doesn't mean that it has to be built in the order that they're done. And it also doesn't mean it's set in stone and it has to definitely be done. It's just that we're using that's one of the projects that was used in the creation of the parks SDC. Now, we we don't lack for parks projects that we could add to this list and certainly take up the the the, you know, if you were to remove that bridge from the list, I'm sure we could come up with plenty of projects that would fill up that same amount. I'm not saying that we should or shouldn't do that, but I just don't see it as something that we need to worry about exceedingly. If you want to change it, there's certainly an option to change it at a later time. If you don't, it can stay on there and just be a low priority project that that doesn't get funded until everything else is funded.
Thank you.
If I could clarify too. If I recall and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know that anybody on the council was against the pedestrian bridge. But everyone on the council was concerned about the costs attached to the pedestrian bridge. And so similar to your CIP, some of these, I don't want to say it's a wish list, but it's it's projects that we would like to do. How we get there, SDCs are might can be used as part of that when the timing is correct. And they can certainly be leveraged just with grant funds or other funding that we're able to secure, similar to what we're doing with the wastewater treatment plant. As you know, our fingers crossed and and all of the stars stay aligned where they're supposed to be. Nearly fifty percent of that project is going to be external funding. And so we could get to that point and utilize SDCs as part of that leverage to help secure grant funding or other outside sources of funding too, if that makes sense.
So I have a question on that. So we okay all of this, and we identify something later in the year that we have a heart, you know, absolutely want to do. Can we add to this, or do we have to wait a year to make that happen?
You do not have to wait. You could add you could you could enact this resolution tonight, and then at the very next meeting, you could amend it.
Okay, so that that's the first question. Second question is, we are talking about doing streetscaping. And I see parks on here. So would that fit into that as well? Would there be any difference because we might want to put water on trees or who knows what lights or whatever?
It's it's a I'd say that's a gray area between streets and parks. There certainly are is such thing as a pocket park, and I could see some of those being added into the capital projects list. But pedestrian areas on streets are also a street expense and could be added to the capital projects list for the streets. So those are those are options that definitely. One one thing I want to point out, though, on the the pedestrian bridge at Sankey Park, notice that in the list, it actually says design and construct pedestrian bridge or route from Sankey Park to the Jim Ritz Community Center. So it doesn't lock you in necessarily to a to an exact way of doing it. Also, the the expense of that project, if it comes in lower, you know, say we find a a used bridge somewhere that if somebody wants to get or get rid of for the cost of moving it, you know, that could bring the cost substantially down, and we don't have to pay the amounts that are listed in here. These are just estimates.
Mr. Mayor, the that project is on the bottom of the list for a reason.
Sure.
You know, because of the cost. Now, on the other side of that, we got a donation toward put toward that. But it doesn't come close to making it easier for us to get to that point. I'm what I don't think the the Parks Board is not committee is not opposed to that. But it's it's there for that reason because of the 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 cost. And so I'm not saying it's not a priority necessarily, but it's not on the top of that list.
Right. And this this list is not necessarily prioritized either. The other thing is we're we're hoping that we will have a an updated Parks Master Plan in the next year or two. And that master plan and the public process that develops it could have a substantially different list of capital improvements. Ideally, you're when it comes to SDCs and our various systems, when you have a master plan done for whether it be wastewater, water, parks, streets, or you know, or stormwater, those 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 master plans will have a capital improvements list that that are that are associated with those master plans. And those lists should be then brought over to this SDC capital improvements list. They they should it should follow that once you make that master plan and adopt it officially, then you bring those over and you adopt them as a part of your SDCs as well.
Mr. Mayor, I've got one more comment and from the very beginning, Sankey Park is the highlight of what we were doing. And we need to get that done first, and we're doing pretty good. They poured much more concrete today in front of the bridge. And I think you're going to finish that in the next few days. I don't know exactly when. But it's going to come to there's a lot of work left to do there. Let's put it that way.
And all of those expenses are SDC eligible expenses.
So, Mr. Mayor, I have one more question. So, Blair, you said this was not prioritized, right? But it does have fiscal year funding.
It's it's a guideline. It's not a it's not a requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to resolution number nine for twenty twenty one, system development charge fee schedule, page sixty seven.
All right, now we've reached the real actual engaging resolution that actually means money. So as I mentioned already, this is based on the methodology and the capital projects list. Essentially, the methodology has the the cap amount of the the most that you can charge. And then you are at liberty to charge anywhere under that. And so this particular resolution and the exhibit I put together based on the feedback from the October meeting using that fifteen thousand dollar target for a single family home and taking that percentage of the maximum and applying it to all the other all the other SDCs. So but it's also spread out over a five year period. And so as you see in this in the schedule exhibit A, it has it shows the maximum permitted SDC. That's the one that's in the methodology. And then it shows five different columns, one effective July first of each year for the next five years. I have this set to go into effect July first of this year. So the first change in in fees from our current SDCs would take place then. And and then thereafter, it would be adjusted every every year on July first. This fee schedule does not include the adjustments for inflation that are in our ordinance and in the in the methodology. And so there would be a further this would be further adjusted based on that inflation inflationary amount that's that's all dictated by the ordinance. So this this is this is available for you to adopt tonight if you wish. If you have other thoughts about what cap you want to go for or how you want to to ramp up to the your target amount, that certainly, I mean, all of this is on the table for change if that is the council's wish. I as well as the effective date. I put July first just because I figured let's give it a little bit of time to to, you know, get to that point, but that's that's it can be effective is basically as soon as the ordinance is effective, which is thirty days from now. So.
Any questions, councilors?
Mr. Mayor, after seeing the how our SDC stack up again to other cities that are comparable to us and seeing Philomath is much higher and then Lebanon recently raised theirs to go for seventeen. Is that what I heard? I would be okay with putting a shorter timeline on this fifteen thousand dollar three year timeline or something to get to us to that rate. Just because it's been so low for so long.
Mr. Mayor, so the the top figure that we had, was it nineteen at some point? Is that true? Yeah.
Yeah, the maximum that you can charge under the methodology. Put it in here somewhere nineteen thousand eight hundred and seventy nine.
And that's that's in that's the fifth year.
No, no. Fifteen thousand is the fifth year.
Oh, okay.
Nineteen thousand eight hundred and seventy nine dollars is the maximum that the data will support.
Okay.
And that I think there was previously some lower numbers around the eighteen thousand mark or something like that that were shared. That this nineteen thousand eight seventy nine figure is what the final version of the methodology dictates. Or states, I should say, doesn't dictate it. Doesn't say you have to do it.
Any other questions, councilors?
So if I may, Susan, I mean, Councilor Coleman. So were you thinking instead of five years, three years? Is that what you were thinking or?
That was just one idea I had. I was we knew that ours were low, but then to look at it one more time and to see how Lebanon has raised theirs as well. I think in we're already behind and then delaying being caught up just makes us more behind for longer.
Which would mean if we cut the fifteen thousand into thirds, that we would go from eighteen hundred and thirty nine to sixty eight hundred and thirty nine approximately. Okay, thank you.
Well, I think originally it was the discussion was on a four year table too. Somehow it's five, but
I reviewed the recording of the October meeting, and that was where I got the five year mark because that was the last instruction that we had received. And so previous to that, there probably was a a different figure.
Well, to comment on on Councilor Coleman's is the fact that we went for a hundred years, it seems like to get from where we are to where we need to be. And so if we if we put this off again and we're going to be way behind again, that's that's a concern for me too. I just don't know. I'm not so sure. I wouldn't be agreeable with the three year thing too. I know it seems like a lot, but it's not a lot if you compare it to who are the people across the street from us basically are. And we could be in the same situation we did with the wastewater stuff back when we when I was on the council for the first four years. I mean, we could have to do something that is really ugly. I don't think that's the case here, but I I think we need to to just like all some of the things we did for the for the police station, we we went high there and and it was approved. And I I just think that I don't want to have to go through this again in another however many years to try to catch up again. So I don't know. I don't know what the answer necessarily is and what the council wants to do, but it's a tough shot. It really is. Well, we we may go back to a four originally was to talk about. That's what the difference, something to think about. So actually, do we want to do a consensus of counsel on this to four or five?
Or three.
Or three, I'm sorry.
It's a it's your meeting, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I think that's the best at this point before moving forward. So I'll start out. And Angela, what was your consensus?
Five year. Three year.
I don't know. Yeah, I'll just
I'm gonna I'm gonna say it for I think three may be a little aggressive.
Three.
I'd say three too. Okay. The consensus is three.
Okay, so I will make adjustments to this to this exhibit to condense that into a three year instead of five year, but otherwise keep all the same proportions. And and bring it back to you.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, the reason why I feel that way is that we've had no complaints about this. It's been on the agenda for ever, right? We've been talking about it for a long time, and nobody's talked to come to talk to us about it. So.
No, I agree. We we were low. There's no question. And I don't think, you know, even three is I think three is a little aggressive, but I can live with three. So I mean, it's Well, Mr. Mayor, I if I'm not, I could be mistaken, but I I don't think we have to do it. We don't have to raise it to that second level. Is that correct? Can we can we adjust that and not let's say it's
You have complete right now, you have complete freedom to set your SDCs anywhere from zero to nineteen thousand eight hundred and seventy nine dollars per single family home.
Okay.
I mean, you anywhere, I mean, there's a lot of options for you.
Yeah.
And it can and it doesn't have to be all at once. It can be over a ten year period if you want it, or you could do it all all this July, you know, it's it's really up to you.
Well, there's so many projects that we need to get done. It seems common sense to me to to go that route, whether it's three or four, but I I think three is the proper way to go.
Mr. Mayor, another reason for that is even after three years, we're still at fifteen thousand dollars, which puts us about three thousand dollars below Lebanon's and significantly below Philomath, which is our closest comparable city. Because isn't Philomath over twenty? I think it's
I think so, if I remember.
Like twenty one or something.
So I'm not motivated by what other cities are doing, but I am motivated by the work that has to be done for our community. And we're we're never going to get where we need to be to have the best infrastructure to make it the safest and the to move our community forward. And I think our community depends on us to make those decisions.
I agree with Councilor Gordon. So, Robert, do we want to move for approval of resolution nine tonight or or just come back? I just want to make sure to clarify that.
Not early, but still got time before even the ordinance goes into effect.
Okay. So we'll postpone that one. Okay, request for council action, resolution number ten for twenty twenty one, disposal of city vehicles.
Sorry, yes. I'm back. Um, as you know, occasionally we, uh, come across various pieces of, uh, equipment in our fleet that, uh, outlive their lifespan. And so we have a list of, several that we'd like to ask you to, uh, to please surplus so we can take them out to, to come out to a bid and see what we can recover, uh, for them. I'll let, uh, either Brandon or Greg take it from here.
Um, on the screen in front of you is a list of the vehicles that are also included in your packet. I did go and grab, uh, mileage for most of these vehicles. One of them, the two thousand four Ford Ranger is a wrecked vehicle. Therefore, I, we couldn't get a mileage on it. Um, and the two thousand two Ford Echoline, uh, or Conaline, uh, I wasn't able to get um, a mileage on either. All of these vehicles are being, um, proposed for surplus today due to the, the age of the vehicle as well as the high mileage on them because they're starting to stack up on the maintenance side. Um, most of these vehicles were purchased in the, kind of the, the early two thousands timeframe. Um, we did the latest one on there. You can see that the bottom is a two thousand two Ford Conaline van. The city was, procured that van in twenty fifteen, um, but it already had high mileage on it at that time and the city doesn't have a use for it in, any longer. So, um, that is why you see it on the list today. Uh, I can answer some questions, but honestly, Greg and Chief or, sorry, Director Springman and Chief can better probably answer about their specific equipment items.
Any questions, councilors? Need a council directive.
So moved as recommended?
Second, motion second, by roll call, please.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes.
Councilor Gerson? Councilor Trask?
Yes.
Councilor Gorley?
Yes.
Councilor Coleman?
Yes.
Councilor Sanchez?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I got, I think that was Councilor Coleman who made the motion and I did not see who was the second.
Councilor Trask. Um, six eyes with no nays, one absent approval, disposal of city vehicles. Um, moving down into ordinance bills, there's not any first reading, no second reading. We'll go to third reading, ordinance number two for twenty twenty-one, ordinance number twelve ninety-four, suite home ordinance pertaining to system development fees.
Ordinance bill number two for twenty twenty-one, ordinance number one-two-nine-four, suite home ordinance pertaining to system development charges.
Any questions, councilors? Need a council directive.
So moved as recommended.
Motion and second, by roll call, please.
Councilor Gerson?
Yes.
Councilor Trask?
Yes.
Councilor Gorley?
Yes.
Councilor Coleman?
Yes.
Councilor Sanchez?
Yes.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes. Let the record show, six eyes with no nays, approval of ordinance number twelve ninety-four, or excuse me, ordinance number two for twenty twenty-one, ordinance number twelve ninety-four. Moving back to resolution number seven, council directive.
I'll second that.
I have a motion, a second, by roll call, please.
Councilor Trask?
Aye.
Councilor Gorley?
Aye.
Councilor Coleman? Councilor Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Mahler?
Aye.
Councilor Gerson?
Aye.
Let the record show, six eyes with no nays, with one absent approval of resolution number seven for twenty twenty-one. Resolution number eight for twenty twenty-one, council directive.
Mr. Mayor, I move the approved resolution number eight for twenty twenty-one.
Second?
I have a motion, a second, by roll call, please.
Councilor Gorley?
Aye.
Councilor Coleman?
Aye.
Councilor Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Mahler?
Aye.
Councilor Gerson?
Aye.
Councilor Trask?
Aye.
Let the record show, six eyes with no nays, approval, and with one absent approval of resolution number eight for twenty twenty-one. And resolution number nine is, is on hold. We'll come back to council. Uh, moving down to reports of committees, anybody would like to bring something up for the committee report?
Mr. Mayor, can I, can I back up just a second? Um, Blair, this, this, we're going to come back to this, our next meeting. Is it, is that going to mess up the timeline for the July date?
No, no, there's still plenty of time between now and then.
Any committee reports, anyone bring up? Okay, I have nothing reported in the mayor's report, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we have posted the library director position. Um, we have it listed as open until filled, probably leave it open for about a month. Uh, we did confer with the state librarian's office on our job description as well as the locations to list it prior to, uh, doing that. Uh, they feel we will get a really good candidate pool. They said the timing is very good. Uh, they said the guaranteed funding from the levy and the history of the levy support in our community are also positives for a solid recruitment pool. They also said the wages and benefits are very, very competitive. Uh, they gave us some places to list. We added a couple to that list, so we have it listed at eleven different sites. Including, including the Association of Rural and Small Libraries Job Board, Pacific Northwest Library Association Jobs, the Pub Lib List Serve, the State Library of Oregon Job Line, LinkedIn, governmentjobs.com, City of Sweet Home website, Facebook, the League of Oregon Cities, the Association of Washington Cities, and the International City and County Manager Association website. Again, if, uh, we'll leave it open for about a month. Uh, if any of you are interested in sitting in on the interview process, again, reach out to me. Um, but I will request, I think we are got a copy of this at the, uh, uh, training, I think, correct? If you didn't let me know, I will request that if you could please read that before you sit on the interview. It's a good short read. I read it on a plane. Not a lot of big words. You can get through it pretty quick. Just wanted to share with you, uh, the mayor, Brandon and I did meet with one very vocal member of the neighborhood that's in consideration for the LID. And I'll share with you, and I think the mayor and Brandon will confirm, he's actually in support of the project. Overall, um, his concern is, is very simply the price tag. Uh, and some of it was not understanding, uh, being concerned that, um, that we were at a point in the process where the council was about to just dump the cost on people. And then when we explained that to him and that we were looking for some other avenues in the process, uh, it seemed to go over much better. Uh, he did give us for, for that property that he's connected to, a ballpark number that he would approve for a project. Um, and quite honestly, we're not very far away in the grand scheme of things from getting down to that number. So uh, we will continue to, uh, to work with the neighborhood and, and the members of that community and try to get a project in line. Certainly we'll reach out with Mr. Victor, um, and continue working with him to try and get something to, that's palatable and certainly advantageous for that neighborhood. So, um, that would include, uh, the project scope. Maybe we narrow it down. Uh, maybe there's only sidewalks on one side of the street in certain areas. Maybe it's just going to be water lines, uh, but, but we'll continue to work with the neighborhood and, and try to come up with something that's palatable for people in that area. And, uh, unless you have any questions, that's all I have.
Any questions, councilors? Okay, uh, department directors report. Any director like to bring something up?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, my, my normal, uh, monthly reminder that tomorrow is, uh, shut-off day for all utility accounts that are past due. Um, unfortunately, I did not get a chance to check in with my staff today, so I don't have a number for you, but I know this morning we were at, right around a hundred. Um, but we usually come down during the course of the day, so, um, today, tonight's it.
So, Mr. Mayor, I did want to ask Greg a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I noticed in your report, you had water turnoffs and turn-ons at two forty-five, two hundred and forty-five for the month. I realize that's ons and offs, so I don't know exactly how many offs there were.
And that could be for a lot of different reasons, not just for ons and offs, right? Customers call in for different reasons.
Okay. Okay, because that's a really high number for one month.
Yeah, and those would be just something I think a total out of our, out of our KPIs that you're looking at. Is that what you're looking at in my report?
I'm looking at the water turn-offs, turn, turn-ons, turns-offs.
Yeah, so that's about right. I mean, we do, we do it a couple of times a month. We also have a lot of ons and offs during the month, so, I mean, I could look at the numbers, but that seems.
That will, that would include new accounts.
Yeah.
People with leak repairs that are asking us to turn it off long enough for them to do the repair and then come back out, turn it on, so that, all of that's probably included in that.
It was just in January, it was fifty and in February it was two hundred and forty-five, which is a lot of difference. So I was just, I was curious.
I hadn't looked at, I can look into why there's a difference. Um, I know up to a point that we weren't doing a lot of turn-ons and turn-offs for other reasons. Um, but I'll look at this particular number, why we had something high.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions, the directors? Okay. Council business good of order, revised Willamette base, re, total maximum daily level DEQ letter to council.
Uh, yeah, there is a letter in your packet, uh, from DEQ. We don't really know what it means yet, so.
I have a question myself.
Yeah, so, um, I can tell you, we got that letter in the mail and, um, immediately Trish started flinging emails back to the, the rep and trying to figure out exactly what it means. Um, there is a training that Trish is going to attend, a, a conference, I guess, to get a better understanding of, of what that really means. As I understand it, it's, it's, it's an effort to reduce lead, um, out in, in, uh, that comes from the city, whether it's, or mercury, excuse me, mercury. And so I'm, I'm sure what it's going to entail is some type of measurement program, uh, to ensure that we're staying within some kind of limits. But your guess is as good as mine at this point. Maybe Greg.
I could possibly help a little bit. So, um, there was a study that's been floated around through EPA and going back through the state. Um, we were listed because of our size and the water stream that we discharge to from our storm drain and wastewater plant. Um, and so they're looking at mercury in the whole Willamette system, um, which is, this feeds that. So, we don't know exactly what that's going to mean for us. We're going to have a meeting, a virtual meeting to kind of go over some of the parameters. There's going to be some training. But basically, we're on this list. Um, we may have to step up some code enforcement type things with construction sites, erosion control. They believe that the mercury is coming from, um, some of the ground that's in the area. Preston, you can chime in if you want, but that's basically how I understand it. We haven't hit everything yet. We're not going to be doing potentially a lot of monitoring, um, but don't hold me to that because I still want to sit through this, uh, class with them. So that's kind of what it's looking like at this point.
So Greg, it's another plan you have to come up with.
Yeah, on stormwater, but it's, it's to reduce mercury in our, our streams. And they've identified, and I, I'm not, haven't dove all the way into this, but they feel that there's natural occurring mercury in our soils. Um, and if you have a lot of landslides, uh, construction, um, activity like that, that they're going to want, uh, there's going to be things that contractors may have to do to keep soil on property. Um, but I'm sure there's going to be a host of other things that we may have to be responsible for, so.
I'm just glad when I see things that says words fine on it. Um, anything more of council business good order? If not, we will adjourn at seven fifty-six. Thank you, everyone.